Welcome to the work session for the Village Board for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Wednesday, May 29. Wednesday meeting instead of Monday because of Memorial Day. First item on our agenda is a visit with the fine folks of the Pedestrian Safety Committee, who have a presentation that I will watch whenever you tell me to and I'll advance the slides whenever you tell.
Great, well, we can start anytime, I think.
All right. There I go.
And yeah, we'll just do it like that. It's all good. So, good evening. Thank you for having the pedestrian Pleasantville, pedestrian Pleasantville, Pleasantville Pedestrian Committee here. We're excited to be here. We are presenting some of our updates on how we have reorganized, restructured the committee since Terry and I stepped up into the co-chair roles in January of this year and projects we plan to move forward with.
Keep talking and we can pull the camera back.
Sure. So we'll go through the presentation. We have left time at the end for questions, so we ask that you please hold up until the presentation and we made sure we've left plenty of time for that. So my name... So my name is Andrea Putnam and I am one of the co-chairs of the committee along with Terry Conway, who's my other co-chair. And we are here tonight with fellow committee members Rosemarie Scolzi and Irene Lusted. So the Pleasantville Pedestrian Committee has been around for a number of years. It started as a grassroots effort by local moms and other community members who had a passion for increasing the safety of our village as well as enhancing the walkability that Pleasantville has known before. Terry and I stepped up into the co-chair roles this January and we were very grateful for the deep roots the committee already had in this community. And it was our vision to really push it to the next level, which we've been working hard to do for the last six months. So one of the... Oh, we can go next, please. And this is the handout that we left at your chairs, so you can look at it a little bit closer. This is a document Terry and I created. One of the things we've really been focusing on extensively is reorganization as well as increased collaboration with village leadership. Three different projects we can complete both on a village level as well as pushing for policy level changes such as Complete Streets, which we'll speak to more in a little bit. So on this document, we thought it was a great overview to give us something to hand out both to new members or potentially interested members, help educate them on what we stand for, what our mission is, but also a document we can hand out at public events. One of our major focuses this year also, in addition to reorganization, is increasing our visibility in the community. We've had a successful presence at some events recently, most recently at Pleasantville Day. So we'll talk more about that in a little bit. So just to briefly read our mission statement, it is to extend pedestrian access and ensure the safety of pedestrians of all ages and abilities in Pleasantville while maintaining a safe and efficient flow of vehicular traffic. Our vision, part of our vision, we're committed to fostering a secure and efficient traffic flow while prioritizing the safety of all community members as they move through the village in full wave. Through thoughtful initiatives and collaborative efforts with village leadership, we strive to create an environment where all can navigate with confidence, contributing to the overall vitality and harmony of our community. So additionally, as part of our organization efforts, we felt designating specific roles to committee members has a two-pronged effect. Number one, it increases collaboration since everyone has a clear idea of what their responsibility is in the committee and the role they're expected to play. And two, it helps committee members who, frankly, were all volunteers, actually feel our time is being well-used in the committee. So our current list of member roles that we've developed is the co-chair position, recording secretary, currently Rosemarie is our recording secretary. We are documenting our minutes now. We're uploading them in our Google Drive and we hope to publish them publicly as well, just for better transparency. We also have a New York State Department of Transportation liaison, Cyrene. We are increasing...
Yeah, it's not an easy role. Still a work in progress.
Don't get me started.
Well, she's working on increasing our direct contacts within the DOT at the state level to continue to promote safety updates on the state roads that run through the village, which as we all know is a big hurdle. We also have someone in charge of marketing and events. We are launching a newsletter this year that we're really excited about. We already have created these seven emails collected and growing. And we've been successfully present at two events. Again, like I said, most recently at Pleasantville Day. We also have a cyclist liaison. We really want to make sure the needs of cyclists in our community are being heard in addition to pedestrians. And recently, we've added a project management and liaison to the superintendent of Public Works, Anthony Carr. And so Nikki is our newest member, who's our project management person. And when Terry goes over the walkthroughs that we've implemented, she'll talk more to that. And we have a Chamber of Commerce representative, which we're very excited about. She and I went out recently and looked at parking in the village and we're putting a really fun presentation together for that. And the goal there is to build relationships with local business owners because it will also benefit them with increased safety and walkability throughout the center of the village. It will bring better foot traffic to their businesses. Anyone who does want to be involved but maybe has less time to devote to the committee proper are invited to be ambassadors. And this is an idea we came up with that they could represent their micro neighborhood. And so as a specific project maybe comes up to the intersection that's their streets with their neighbors, they can help collaborate with their neighbors specifically. And that way, we also continue keeping in touch with residents of the village. That's been a big part of our vision, is seeing ourselves as a line of communication, also a place where people can go to just feel heard about their frustrations and then be able to communicate that effectively to village leadership. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So as Terry and I have observed the growth of this committee over the last six months, we felt there were four pillars.
Again, there we go.
Thank you. And so we felt there were four pillars that we are building our future growth off of. So we have a pillar of analysis, which includes our walkthroughs. Again, Terry will go over that more in detail, as well as policy work such as Complete Streets. Collaboration, which includes organized presentations to village leadership and honoring their expertise regarding possible safety updates. Visibility, which includes creation of a newsletter this year as well as participating in community events. And outreach, which includes being a platform for helping residents who want to spread word of a petition. Education on being a safe pedestrian. We hope to connect with the school board and get them to the schools for education as well and aiding with seeking grants. And so now my co-chair Terry will discuss those pillars in further detail.
Hi, thank you all. We're glad to be here. We're very excited about the growth the committee has seen this year. A lot of good members. We have a lot of strength. So we are working on these pillars. So to strengthen the pillar of analysis, we developed a process for neighborhood walkthroughs. And this just kind of came about to us as we went to Irene's neighborhood. So if you advance to the next slide, we'll show you a little bit about the process of walkthroughs. So when a community member reaches out to us with an issue, we like to go and we like to meet them. We like to meet them in the neighborhood. We like to meet them where the problems are. So we started taking some photos and we thought this will be great. We can use our photos. We can mark them up a little bit with ideas that we have, with ideas that the residents have, and then we can come back and we can present them to village leadership. So that will help to improve the safety in the village and also in the neighborhoods around the heart of the village. So from the walkthroughs and discussions and collaboration with our village leadership, we've learned that there are three areas, the projects on the village streets, which can be completed relatively quickly at times because they can be inexpensive. They can be small or large, but we're trying to stay, you know, budget-friendly. So we're using a lot of paints and striping and things like that that aren't that expensive but do really enhance the safety. And we've been very fortunate with the expertise of the superintendent of Public Works, Anthony Carr, our village administrator, our village engineer, because he's really been educating us during these presentations as to things and how they're done and, you know, what we can and can't do. Then there are larger projects to be considered, and they would be the Complete Street planning projects. And they can be larger in development or they can be larger in safety. So it doesn't necessarily mean that because they're larger, they're going to be expensive. It's just they take a more thoughtful process. So we usually have met with our police chief, with our village administrator, and with the superintendent of Public Works, and we discuss the safety concerns. And because they're the experts in the community, they're the experts in our leadership, that we reach to them to kind of guide us with what our thoughts are and then what can actually happen. So we want to see, of course, the traffic volume safely through the village. And we want to see, and when we say pedestrians, we also mean cyclists and, you know, anybody of any ability getting through safely. So just to give you an example of a small project that is actually a larger safety project, we'd like to see a crosswalk somewhere near Edgewood on Washington. But when we started to discuss that, all it is is a crosswalk. It's a simple crosswalk, a little bit of painting. But then in discussing the area, the traffic flow coming from Chapewa is a little, you know, it's a little quick coming down that way. It's a little wide in the area. So we didn't just want to put something there. So we were advised to think about putting that into Complete Streets and let's have an engineering study done so that we know we're, you know, safe for the pedestrians. And a lot of village residents have reached out to us about that area because especially there's a lot of students that use Lucios and Cold Stone, as do I. And, you know, it's just a very busy traffic area and there's no cross at that end. So that we're considering moving to the Complete Streets area. And to strengthen our village of collaboration was our meeting with our village leadership. And they've been, you know, very available to us, so we truly appreciate that. And we're creating a project worksheet. So that's Nikki is going to be our project manager. And that's going to have three areas. So the first area are those village safety, our village streets, the safety initiative within our own streets that we can look at. Then when I say "we," I mean, the expert, right, can look at and say, "How can we improve safety in these areas?" So I'm going to show you a couple of examples of that. And then there are the Complete Street projects. And they require a little more planning, the engineering study, and hopefully grants that we can apply for. And they're often on the state and county roads. And then there are the backburner ideas. So these projects, I like to even think of as our dreams, like, "What are we going to do in the future? Not just what can we do today." So we were just discussing the North County Trail connection that they're doing over in the River Towns for the bicyclists. So they received a $2 million planning grant and then they need an implementation grant. So wouldn't it be great? They're going to do the north and south from the city on up if Pleasantville can do the east and west. And we can take cyclists safely from Pleasantville across Eltway over to all our beautiful trails in Rockefeller. So that's kind of a dream of, you know, using the county and the state areas. But then there's also Tompkins Ave. When we went to visit the Saratoga area and Sunnyside, we noticed there's no safe way for residents in that area of town to get over to the heart of the village for our farmer's market for Pleasantville Day, for all the events, for commuters to get to the trains, for the cyclists to come, for, you know, the kids to go back and forth. But Tompkins is an absolutely fabulous street with, you know, there seems to be a lot of area there. And we've just started to discuss, maybe someday, that could be a nice safe corridor for pedestrian traffic going back and forth from that area of town and bringing everyone into the heart of the village safely. So if you advance to the next slide, these are just some examples of what we've done. So this is Columbus Ave and Saratoga. And the top little picture, that's a... So Irene was sort of what initiated, she initiated these walkthroughs because we went to see her area and she brought to our attention that although there's a stop sign, it's very large, it's older, it hasn't been well-marketed a few years. And we brought it back to, you know, our village administrator and to our superintendent and to the police chief, and we started to discuss it. And they seemed to love the idea. And Superintendent Carr went out and he completed a complete engineering study. It was like fabulous and he got back to us very quickly. And so they're going to be working on increasing the stop signs with safety reflective strips and brightening the paint of the lines on the street. So something very simple is going to give a lot more safety and visibility to that area. And so the next, if you advance to the next slide, is Mountain Road and Crawford. And it was, you know, a very similar process. It was one of our members, Brian, who brought this to our attention. And a walkthrough was done in that area. And what Superintendent Carr even noticed was that there's a hidden driveway. So there really should be a hidden driveway sign there. And it brings attention for the drivers to slow down, to be aware that that's not part of the intersection. It's a private driveway. And so these are the kind of changes that we hope to make on the village streets, which are relatively inexpensive but very thoughtful and hopefully create, you know, a much safer environment for all of our residents. And so finally, our walkthroughs, we'd like to consider our walkthroughs a way for the village residents to connect with us and then ultimately with the leadership within the village. So we're acting as a liaison for them. And we hope to take the next steps, you know, as people contact us, to go to these different areas and then to advance to our larger projects, the Complete Streets projects. And Rosemarie and Irene have a little bit about Complete Streets and what that will mean for us as a village.
So then I think the next slide just briefly shows the overview of what we were describing as we do the walkthroughs and bring it to village leadership. It gets funneled into different states, so to speak. So we're working on keeping very organized tallies of these different projects that we're looking at. And then the next slide is about Complete Streets.
So what is Complete Streets? I've been doing a lot of reading about it. We, first of all, we think it's a great opportunity to join some of our neighboring communities and take advantage of a federal funding program that will pay to improve the safety of our village for everyone. It will require a professional study that will confirm and back up needed improvements. The study will be necessary for receiving money from Complete Street sources. It is designed to consider the safe mobility and access of all roadway users, pedestrians like disabled, elderly, student, jogger, walker, commuter, non-drivers, the bikers, as well as public transportation and motorists. It will prioritize safety and vulnerable pedestrians over speed. Maybe we should call it the Equity of All Users of the Road project. Because that's the way it was in the old days. The pedestrians were king. And all of a sudden, the car came along and knocked them out of the park. So... And so what will it, so how does, okay, it'll provide the village with a plan of action, not only for current projects, but also future development and infrastructure needs. It can include sidewalks, land striping, bike lanes, paved shoulders, signage, crosswalks, pedestrian control signals, bus pullouts, curb cuts, raised crossworks, walks, ramps, and traffic calming measures, which I think we need a lot of. So how do we make this happen? Yeah, the next. First, with a required resolution from the board adopting Complete Streets standards and policies for Pleasantville, that you have to do first. Then by advocating for safer streets, which this committee is doing as it interacts with the community in various ways, as Andrea spoke. By applying for grant money, which is available for approved projects. By looking to a professional engineering study that will point out the most effective measures. And lastly, by involving this Pedestrian Safety Committee, the Complete Streets requirement to recreate a citizens committee will already have been met. And what will the impact be on our village? Of course, safer streets, more walking and biking instead of driving, which means less traffic and more parking available. It'll bring benefits to the local businesses, enhance property taxes, uh, property values, not taxes.
It might. Face facts, it might a little.
End word. It will address shifting priorities. I'm sure most of you are aware, more and more residents, both young and old, are prioritizing a healthy, climate-conscious lifestyle and want to live where they can leave their car at home at times and get out there and walk, bike, and jog safely. And lastly, will bring further confirmation and enhancement of the village of Pleasantville's reputation as a walkable community. Thank you very much.
Irene, you want to wrap it up? Sure. So I think, you know, the committee and Complete Streets kind of are going to be one kind of lovely partnership. You know, as Rosemarie mentioned, the Pedestrian Committee satisfies the requirement to have a citizens advisory board and part of the enhancements that have been made to include chambers of commerce representation, you know, bicycling representation. We want to make sure that we have a diversity of views because we have a diversity of people in Pleasantville. And it's very important that we don't want anybody to feel like they are not welcome or that their views are not respected as well. I think Complete Streets really aligns very well with our four pillars, which we can continue to expand in line with Complete Streets. So the collaboration, analysis, visibility, and outreach. In terms of analysis, our walkthrough process has really prepared us for engaging with engineers. We've learned a lot as we've engaged with Anthony and Eric. And I think, you know, we've learned to understand how to think about these things. It's not just about budget. It's about what are the implications, what can we can and can't do. So we'd really like to ensure that we would be included in planning discussions for transparency and visibility, to make sure that that's very clear. And then we can also help to be a voice to the community. So it's not just us coming to you with open hands, but also we can help with the advocacy, with the explanations, with the Facebook responses, you know. I may regret signing up for that. We can help. We can also be, you know, a partner for you to help us as, you know, liaisons into the community to really explain what is the difference between a state road, a county road, and a Pleasantville road? Why can't we just put a stop sign and a speed bump on every corner, you know? So I think, you know, as we learn and we engage, we can help with that as well. And then last but not least, you know, outreach is something we clearly feel strongly about. We'd like to continue doing that and we'd like to help you with that. And I would say, you know, in general, we would just like to thank you all very much for all of your time, for all the support that we've gotten collectively and individually. We really appreciate it. And I think at this point, we would like to open it up for any questions we might have.
Well, for starters, if, I would have to say you guys are like the prototype for a well-organized...
We have good leadership, yes.
These two ladies are amazing. I've been on a lot of organizations and I'm in awe of them.
Thank you. Good members.
Remarkable in every respect. And well and thoroughly presented, like, I've been sitting at this desk for a long time and I think you have rocked it to the top of the community, the community presentation. I say that with great respect for many others, but really quite impressive. So, as you already indicated, a bunch of things. Cleaning and improving stop signs, getting striping out, that sort of stuff is, is, is sort of nuts and bolts where we can make progress without a big budget problem, any of that, that sort of stuff. I mean, a full-blown Complete Streets study, like a full-blown Complete Streets study is some hundreds of thousands of dollars, sure. Are you imagining that we should aim for that? Or should we identify a smaller section and say, "We're going to start with this section of the community and talk about Complete Streets"?
Well, I know when we spoke to Lieutenant Carr about this, his recommendation, and we agree that this is a fantastic approach, was to select a small number to start with and then kind of think of it as a rolling basis. So work on a couple, and then as work progresses and maybe more funding comes in from other grants, move on to the next section. So we were imagining of having a list that we could draw on whenever the village felt ready.
So if we started with, say, three intersections, even on a smaller scale, and do an engineering study there and then see what would the expense be for implementation, possibly get the implementation grants for those areas. Then as they get completed, then we can go down our list. I'd say we have about 10 intersections right now that people have brought to our attention. And we know that it doesn't happen all in one year. But if it's over five years, if it's over eight or 10 years, it's that constant flow of improvement and a constant focus on improvement. And with the amount of grant money there, and we know the grant money is being spent because we do see some of our neighboring, you know, areas receiving those grants. So it is there and we hope that we can access that. But yes, start small. We don't want to...
Intersections, sorry, are those intersections also state roads? Like, are there... On most of the intersection that's brought up are state, county roads.
It's a mix, yeah. I think when we would bring something to Anthony's attention, you know, often he would look at volume of cars that are going through, volume of people, complexity of the intersection, you know, is it a simple cross intersection? Or is it at, he used some term for it, kind of at an angle? So I think the more complex, the more you need to think in a bigger picture approach and how is this all connected? So he's been helping us add to that other list for maybe more of that connected viewpoint. But I know this is a big reason we've been focusing on visibility, is we really want to communicate that change takes time. And we know that the more we've been working with village leadership. And, you know, I think a lot of people can feel frustrated, feeling like, "Why is this road still, you know, not fixed?" or something. So we hope to be able to help ease those feelings in the community as well and help people understand that it does take time, you know?
Yeah, I think that's an important role, particularly for the Pedestrian Committee because as you've learned, it is complicated, you know? And it's nice to not have to, like, explain everything from scratch, you know, each time. So I think that's very helpful. Am I right that Mount Kisco received some funding for the study? Not just for the actual implementation of the project?
I listened to their, about a year ago, maybe less, I listened to their meeting. It was on video, you know, you can watch it and listen to it. And they had budgeted for the study to pay that on their own. But I think that subsequently, they did get a grant for the study. So, you know, you could do it either way. But that'll give you the study, you know, that'll get, and that study is... The engineers would work with the village, with the committee and, you know, the community to see what our wish list is or our, you know, our points.
Right. There were both planning and implementation grants. The $2 million grant that they received on the North County Trail, that was the planning grant. So then, once they decide how many, say it costs $6 million for the implementation, but they did receive the funding for the planning part.
Our study isn't going to cost that much.
No, no, no.
No, but money being a bit of an issue, particularly now, like, any grant money that's available.
So if you pass a resolution, I, you know, that is the first step. It is complicated because I've read a lot of the studies, but, you know, it's, a lot of it's out there, like, you know, you really need to have confirmation of what you're reading. But that's the first step. And then we can go out and see.
And bid for stuff, yeah.
And listen to, you know, decide on an engineering firm and go from there.
Yeah. So that was going to be my other question, obviously. Some of this I already knew. Where are we with putting together a sample resolution for the Complete Streets?
Yes, so we've called together a variety of examples. On the state website, there's actually examples of other communities' resolutions. So some of them are, we've shared, are very generalized. Some of them are very specific, so we can craft this, we see fit. We've talked to our grant writers, so they're tuned in on identifying grant opportunities. We recently applied for grant funding through a street skate program. I believe we submitted that about a couple of weeks ago, maybe two weeks ago. That one did not mandate a formalized policy. We did have an informal policy. We submitted as part of that grant opportunity. But yeah, our grant writers are on it right now. The town-village of Mount Kisco secured funding through the CFA process, through the New York State Regional Economic Development Council. So there are a variety of pots of money out there. And so we'll definitely apply to all of them.
That's great. So I personally, I mean, I've been aware of this process for a little while. I personally am in favor of passing a resolution in support of Complete Streets. I'm wondering, so Eric is talking about different models that he's looked at. What would you, you like your role to be in terms of, you know, the language that we settle on for that?
We've already kind of started. We've worked on that already together.
Yeah, I've shared with them some of the example policies. They've submitted their feedback, so we'll probably end up having a work session on it in a narrow... So we'll probably end up having a work session on it to narrow, narrow down.
Okay, that makes sense. All right.
I wanted, you know, I learned a commend you on the presentation and what you're doing, uh, specifically on. You know, picking all the different neighborhoods that you can all relate to. I think that's really important to be able to do. Um, do you have any kind of, um, data like that's, that's almost visible to the community of? All the projects that you're doing and maybe the results that have come, like? Do you go into, let's say you identify an issue that's been dangerous, or maybe there's been accidents or things like that? Where you identify it, you take action, it gets fixed, and then maybe a year later, you're like, whoop, we haven't had any issues like that at all. I think people love to see the before and after kind of thing and that really brings awareness to, to changes that you're actively doing.
Yes, so we will be, we'll be photographing. So some of these changes, like the changes in the flats will be, are coming, um, in the middle of June. I believe so. We will be taking photos of before and after. I think with, um, actually demonstr- demonstrating that there's been an actual change, it's going to take time.
Right.
Right? And we don't know for certain that this will fix the issue, but we certainly think it will help. So I think we, we didn't want to make any drastic changes. Uh, we don't, we don't want to create any unintended consequences is, is one of the things as you make changes to intersections. You don't want to create a problem, you know, a block away as a result of it. So I think, you know, and also with, by using things like paint, it's easy to change if it's not working. So I think we will be, you know, keeping close, I will be keeping in touch with the chief to see, you know, is he seeing, you know, as he's doing enforcement? Is he seeing fewer people run the stop sign?
Right.
Things like that. So.
We have some kind of tracking system to.
Also, um, and if you look in a lot of Complete Streets data and, and, uh, documents that are out there. There's, uh, actually studies that have shown that when certain things are done, accidents have been reduced. I can't point to exactly, but I've read, like I said, there's so much information online about this. Uh, it can give you a headache, but, um, I have seen that data that it definitely improves.
I think in terms of the before and after, I think also our newsletter comes in play there. So I think we'll definitely be highlighting that.
So in our newsletter, we're developing different sections, you know, sort of a typical email newsletter blast where it's like. Um, little graphic, top three, um, maybe more of a long form that links to, we want to create a landing page with links. And if citizens have petitions that they've started, like I know, um, our village resident Ellen Norton. Started a petition. So that could be something where we advertise the link, you know, and, and help give voice to the grassroots stuff that is happening. Which we also think is a super important aspect. Um, so definitely showing statistics would be a great addition to the newsletter. I love that, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're all your, your.
All right, this is great. So. We'll wrap our head around what the resolution should be in concert with you and I think. You have a ringing endorsement for your work so far.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thanks for your.
Well, I, I, I'm late. I actually wanted to hear your presentation, uh, because I'm trying to figure out. Kind of how you guys are going to interact with the, with the board, um, and what, what, what? What the committee, I'm sorry, I'm late, um, uh. I, I think it's, I think you got, I think that's an important role, um, as well. Uh, I, I do quibble over when I hear walkable, walking village, uh, because I, 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 I. I think walking village is sort of Rockwellian. It's aspirational. It's not really who we are. I think we're a walking, a walkable village. As opposed to a walking village, um, and I worry that by focusing on walking village. We may, it may influence policy in the wrong direction. Um, so, uh, that's why I'm sort of curious how you're going to interact with the board on this. Um, uh, but, uh, in, in a here unintended consequences, and, and again, this is. I, 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 I get you're working this out, it sounds like, but for example. Uh, all the work being done on, on Mandeville Road, or Mandeville Road has created, I think. A horrendous situation at the corner of Tompkins and Mandeville Road. I don't know if you've looked at that yet, but. But cars have to cheat out into the road now, right during, right during, uh, on Tompkins to make a left-hand turn. Because the, the traffic backs up beyond Tompkins now because you can't make the right out of Washington. Um, and what happens? They go right through the, the pedestrian crosswalk. And it usually happens around rush hour, right when pedestrians are coming off the train. And I'm looking at, oh my God, you know, um, and pedestrians are going in front of them and behind them and it's, it's really, uh. So the degree that, uh, again, you guys can figure out how to integrate with the village, um, better, the board and provide insights on this. That, but I mean, it's sort of false because the work that being done on Mandeville was with the best intent. Uh, but as you guys called it, unintended consequences, I think. Uh, and I think, I think that might be a signaling issue. I don't know. You guys are probably working on.
And there are a lot of pieces to it, but recall also that the corner of Tompkins used to have a diagonal crosswalk. That was itself an extraordinarily bad situation.
No, no, I, I, I didn't say you didn't improve it. I'm just saying that, uh, uh, now you're looking at, now you're looking at almost. Any hour of the day, you've got to cheat across that intersection.
Very good point because the two outreach people that I think would be interesting to add would be commuters. And, um, and young, and young children. Yeah, I'm a commuter as well. Then the right on the sun is. Those are very interesting points. It would, I, I think we've spoken before and great presentation, by the way, but the. I, I think the, uh, education to commuters and to young children are going to be also a big thing about. You know, also just like being aware and like we have a lot of work going on.
Right.
And, and that's like a two, two-way street.
Well, I was just thinking two-way street. That's exactly, you know, I think we see our role as a two-way street. Yeah, I know, right?
Article for you guys with the walkability.
So look, this is a great conversation. We got to move on because we've got Anthony Carr waiting for us. You're welcome to hear about the Nantahigan Rook restoration.
Jonathan, if you have the chance, you should, you should go back and look at their presentation.
When they, when we're going to walk out, I was going to ask them.
Yeah, they have actually a much more rigorous way of interacting with the board than I would say any committee I've seen up until now. Yeah.
Yeah.
Quite thorough.
And, and by the way, I'd like to be, uh, if, if, I, I didn't know if you were going to be talking about the speed limit suggestions. I don't know if it was your committee that made it lowering the speed limits up, because I want to be part of that discussion because. I, I just like to be part of that discussion. Um, I have some thoughts on that. Not necessarily what you want to hear, but I do have some thoughts.
We want everyone's views.
Absolutely.
Thank you all. I don't need to cut this off, but we got to get to Anthony here who's been waiting us.
Thank you.
Thanks, an awful lot.
You there, Anthony? You are muted if you hear us.
Uh, no, the mayor has.
All right, I'll, I'll just sit with Mayor.
Hi, I am here. I'm actually in the office and I didn't see the panelist, uh, option. So I'm here. I could hear you.
There you are. We can hear you too.
Excellent.
All right.
All right, I will, well, first, good evening, Mayor and Board and Eric. Um, I will share my screen and do a cursory review, uh, with everyone regarding, uh, Woodin and Curran's technical memorandum. Which you should have in your.
We do.
All right.
We do, I. Oh my God.
Yeah, I know. I hope you were sitting down when you read the, uh.
Yeah.
Memo, and maybe you had a glass of wine too, but okay, so, so. Um, I'll, I'll keep it brief because Woodin and Curran did a good job, um.
Very thorough.
Yes, they did a very, very good job with a synopsis of, of, of their investigations, which. Basically walked up and down from Broadway up towards the pool site, uh, for about 1,500 linear feet, uh, if not more of retaining wall. They evaluated every section and as the board could surmise from the memo and probably what you've seen, uh, in your own personal experiences. At the PCTV site and also towards the cottage school and up towards the pool. Uh, there's no question that there is sections of the wall that are past the useful life. And Woodin and Curran basically said, most of the wall is past the useful life, um. And they go on to, and, and I'll get to the graphics and the colors to tie this all in together, but they basically ranked their assessment of the wall conditions from. High risk, medium risk and low risk. There was one little small 25 foot section that was low risk, so we could take that off the table. Uh, so really most of the, most of the walls were ranked as high and medium, um, risk or risk to safety slash priority to replace.
All the way past Broadway.
Correct. And I'll, um, you know what? I'll just actually skip because I think a picture is worth a million words, right? I, I'm still a picture person, so. Um, okay, so this is down Broadway, intersection of Lake Street, Broadway, cottage school in this area here, right? Um, the report, or I should say the memo basically has seven segments of wall, well, eight. If you consider one A and one B separate segments, but they basically give a, um, a priority level to each of these segments. And they give a corresponding, uh, budget cost, which includes three, three different variables. Your, your construction cost, uh, which is the contractor's, um, cost. The soft cost, which is engineering and, and maybe invest, any, any other investigation that has to be done as part of the project, meaning from a surveyor or geologist. And then there's the, the, um, contingency, which is basically a built-in safety factor. Which I will say that, and Woodin and Curran admits, um, that the, that the, the, um. The amount of, 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 um. Scaling that they used for, for the, um, for the factor of safety, or if you want to say for the contingency. They, they admit that it's, it's high, right? So, you know, this is really just to be, this, this memo a- and picture is really a planning tool. For the, for the, for the administrator and for the board to, to think about. Three to five years out, you know, what are our priorities? What are not our priorities? What should we spend the money on? How much is going to, this is going to cost? So I will start and say that the costs are probably a bit higher. Uh, because at this time, there's no design done, right? And, and we're, we're just about reaching a 30% level. Uh, for this segment, one A, right? Which is about 160 linear feet of wall, you know, linear feet, meaning in a straight line, right? Um, so, you know, that, that, that lends itself to, to, to believe that there's still a lot of unknowns north and south of the site now. The, uh, Woodin and Curran has completed a site survey of this entire area, meaning a topographic survey from, uh, Dan Merrick performed the survey. And then also a, uh, a boring contractor came in to drill borings to see what the subsurface soil conditions are like. Why do we need that? But we want to know groundwater, we want to know bedrock. And we want to know what types of soil there for the future, um, foundation design for the retaining walls. So that's really where we stand with Woodin and Curran's progress for segment one A. They are starting their design. They're, they're entering that, that 15% realm and are working towards a 30% realm. But for all intents and purposes, nothing else has been designed. So that's why those, those numbers that you see here. They're, 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 they're high. And okay, that's also today's dollars, right? We know inflation is just going to keep, continue to increase, but you know, Woodin and Curran did a good job at, at prioritizing different segments. But this is, this is kind of the, the longer table, right? You look at the different segments, which are labeled on that map. They give you a, a length, linear foot, that's the LF. Uh, construction estimate, soft cost budget, project contingency and total budget now. You know, the all-in number is six and a half million dollars. That's also what a project contingency, about 30%. 30% is very high and that is a, a typical contingency that you carry at a very, very conceptual design stage. So that number is likely lower. Um, can't quantitatively speak to that, how, how much lower to be, but. You know, it's 30% now, likely you carry towards the end of design, 10% contingency. So you really firm that number up. Uh, soft, soft cost budget, I mean, we're pretty much in line. If you look at it, $800,000 construction cost is 250 for soft cost. You know, you start looking down, they're, they're scaled appropriately. So, you know, unfortunately, you know, what this is telling you is, okay, construction's maybe about $4 million. Uh, engineering's about $1.2 million, contingency's a million and a half, that's a wild card. It might only be $500,000 i- in, in real life, it could be 750. It likely is not 1.5, but at this point in the design, the consultant has to be very conservative. And then a total budgetary expense for the eight segments is about six and a half million dollars. Again. The real dollar value is likely less than six and a half million dollars, maybe closer to that $5 million realm, five and, you know, five and a quarter. Again, these numbers have been inflated for the reasons, um, I just mentioned earlier, but, uh, just to kind of go down a little bit too. You know, then what they did, Woodin and Curran, was they, they developed a table, right? Said, okay, if the village was to do a five-year capital plan or an eight-year capital plan, well, here's the priorities. One being immediate, two, kind of off to the future, right? And, and they tie that to each segment, which we'll go to the map, but it's segment one A, which is what we're studying right now, which is what the consultant is in design right now. To replace. And then there's two, seven, we kind of bounce around. Um, again, they, they, with all things being equal and the whole wall not being in good shape. They prioritized, um, the distance of the road, uh, of the road from the, from the existing wall, right? Because the closer the failing wall is to the road, the more of an impact it could have on the road itself, the roadbed. And also the existing utilities, which underneath Lake Street, you have condensing gas. Uh, you have a Westchester County Department of environmental facilities, uh, county trunk sewer, I believe it's a 12-inch sewer. That runs down the middle of the road. And then you have our 10-inch and 16-inch water mains. And you have a little bit of drainage, not much, but, but, but some. So there are considerable amount of utilities in the roadway. Um, and this is why the consultant took that into account when developing their risk analysis, if you will, or their segment prioritization for the, for the retaining wall segments. But what I liked at the end, you know, they kind of blended the, they called it a phase, right? Which we're in phase one right now. And then they said, okay, well, instead of going through all the different segments of wall and treating it. Treating them in separate phases, there is an economies of scale a- and a cost benefit. That's realized when you start combining segments, right? Both from the permitting standpoint, uh, both from a contractor's, um, bidding, right? They see more wall, you get a little bit of a better number, uh, logistics, obviously if you're there and you're mobilizing, you have to. Divert a stream or bypass, which is where a lot of these costs are derived from. To work in water, uh, you, you have to really drive in sheeting, which everyone's probably seen, but it's that kind of. Channeled, pre-rusty look steel, vertical steel that you sometimes see at docks. Um, you see it in a lot of waterways, um, gangways, but, but they're often, um, driven into the ground. Um, in, in, in riverine and, and water applications because they're very good at holding back. So they're called cofferdams is, is the, is the, is the technical word for it, but. Having to cofferdam the water and, and divert water from going in one direction to another and using what they call bypass pumps to, to bring water from one spot to another. If you want to keep a certain area dry, where you're constructing the retaining wall, they, um. That often drives the cost up, right? And there's also limitations from the DEC when you can do that. They sometimes like it during the drier periods, right? Because it's lower flow, but then sometimes depending on what. Flora and fauna spawning and, and fish and aquatic life is spawning in the river, sometimes they push it to the fall. So the contractor says, yeah, well now I have to deal with the higher water flow. So there's a little bit of push and pull from the regulatory standpoint versus the actual logistics for the construction. So again, that's why these numbers, when you see, wow, this is expensive for a wall. It, it's really not so much the wall that you're paying for, it, it's, it's the logistics and, and the staging and, and working within the water body that, that we, uh, unfortunately get. Bang over the head for from the contractors. Um, so again, Woodin and Curran did do a good job at phasing out. What they believe i- i- is, is a priority and also combining segments too, and then giving you an estimated phase cost. Again, this is hard cost plus soft cost plus contingency. So it's those three variables. So these numbers again are likely inflated. Understandably at this point, based on what we know, um.
And Anthony?
Yes.
Do you think, um, obviously, one A, as we have discussed, is a critical matter to take on soon?
Yes.
Um, when we get to the second and later priorities. How far in that process? How far down the list of priorities, uh, would still fall into the category of. Nearing red alert versus be aware this needs to be done down the road?
Good, uh, good question, man. I figured you and, and the board would ask that. So if I was. I mean, my professional recommendation on seeing this and having Woodin and Curran's information in front of us. I would say really, I mean, you could probably, for the foreseeable future, since money's not an infinite resource. And we have a lot of other projects and priorities that I know are coming down the pipeline with the water storage tanks, right? Potentially the pool, civic space, Mandeville Road. We got a lot of things o- o- on the plate aside from our annual paving, curb sidewalks. I would say for the, maybe just take a look at the first three phases for now. Um, you know, the other ones are nice. Uh, I don't know if they're a must-have, uh, for example, if you look at. Segments three, one B, six, four, five, if you go to the map. You know, that, that's, segment seven's down here by Broadway. And the only reason why this was a high priority is because there's a culvert that connects by, uh, to Seneca Lane.
And is, is, is the condition there, I've not looked at that one, is, is that? A similar level of trouble as one A or not?
Well, the red, yeah, I mean, the red i- i- is the, is the risk level one, right? That's the highest. So you got red. This is the culvert when you're coming into PCTV. That's the old, that, that's a PCTV building, pump house, right? So there's red here, right? Which is, or back lane is right, 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 right in front. You got red, which is what we're working on now. And that, that's orange, yellowish. You got red kind of when you get up, go up Lake Street, you got red around the bend. Uh, because of the hydraulics where the, the river is flowing this way, right? And we know rivers don't like bends. Um, you tend to get a lot of erosion and turbulence there and, and wash out. Uh, they have it, again, they have it red because of the proximity of this wall to the roadway. which I think there's utility pole there. It's not so much the culvert, that's the issue. It's the proximity of, of, of the road to the, to the uh, to the wall. So that's segment seven. They have that as priority three. Sorry, I have to keep pinching it in and out, but they had this priority three, and I agree with that. I think, I think that segment by the wall, by the culvert, you know, if you buy a road, you buy utilities, right? So I, I definitely agree with the top three phase numbers. And, and I mean, we can't do everything, you know, all at once. And certainly this is a very, very intricate project and you could dedicate your whole capital improvement program to, to, to doing this every year, certainly. But, you know, for the foreseeable future and, and just fixing what I think needs to be fixed to avoid any problems on Lake Street, to avoid any problems on Broadway, I would say you could probably stop it at, at phases one, two, and three. And, and really then reassess and, and, and maybe even see if there's any changes to the, to the wall and to the erosion in the areas for segments three, one B, six, four, and five. And that's easy, you put a, you could put a, a, a yardstick there or, or a contractor's grade stick and, and you could literally just chalk or put a marker of what the levels of the sediment are there. And then you could follow back to see if the sediment's accumulating, if, if, if it's uh bleeding back towards Lake Street. So there's very, very simple, non-technical ways that we could monitor uh the, the rip, the brook in these other segments, if it's really eroded at a fast rate.
Water and current is in design for one A.
Yes, mayor, right, right.
But not for two or seven?
Correct, correct.
And is it, is it illogical to pursue the implementation of one A without two? Or does it make much more sense and save money?
Uh huh.
If it, ironic term, uh, to do one A and two together, does that matter?
Well, from a permitting standpoint, for sure, you wouldn't have to go to the DEC twice. Um, that's the, that's the first thing, right? And that, they're always, they're always a wild card and we know that. Um, I mean, yeah, if you were gonna combine two segments off the, again, not, not looking at taking the money variable and the funding variable aside. Yes, practically speaking, from a risk standpoint, it would make complete sense to do segments one A, which, again, these segments, just to clarify, they're delineated by color, right? So one A is the, is the kind of the pink, one B is the, the blue, three is the orange, we'll call it, or salmon. And then, and then uh segment two is the kind of gold or, or, or yellow. So yeah, you, one would think, and I would recommend that you would take one A, if money was no object, but I know it is, you would take one A and two because what you would accomplish there is you would repair slash replace your one most deteriorated portions of the wall, right? Cause you have some red here, you got red and orange, you got more red than orange. You're also.
One A is red alert, gotta do it.
Yes, but.
I mean, we've looked at that situation with the water main that goes under it, the whole nine yards.
Yes, and you have some yellow there too, mayor, but, or orange, I should say, not yellow. But the thing is, with this segment of wall from two and one A, you would be mitigating and, and, and improving the sections of wall that are closest to Lake Street, right?
Right. It just looks like a bigger number than we had hoped.
Ye- yes, yes. That would be, right now, they're estimating, you know, one A and two, right? So segment two is a second priority, right? So if you grouped, if you did a one A plus two, I mean, you're looking at two and a half million dollars. That's hard cost and soft cost, that's what a lot of contingency. You know, it's probably realistically, realistically the construction cost. But again, you can't negate the soft cost because you can't get to the, can't get to the construction without doing the engineering design, right? But if you looked at it just engineering and construction and you took out the contingency, you'd be removing, um, what was that, one A and two? Six hundred thousand dollars roughly from, you know, if you took the contingency out. Let's say that contingency is not six hundred. Let's say it's really two hundred thousand dollars, so you take out four hundred thousand dollars from the two point five. You're probably looking at, yeah, a, a two-ish, a two-ish figure for the design and construction of segments one A and two.
Still a big number, so.
Yes.
All right, um, but they are at work now on design of one A.
Yes, mayor, nope.
And when you, I mean, it, at what point is it inefficient to be working on one A without working on two?
Well, I'd say there's, we're, we're, we're probably getting to that point where uh Wooden Current knows that we're obviously meeting, they prepared this memo for this discussion. Uh, I'll take back uh what the direction is from the administrator and from the board. And then we can have another discussion with Wooden and Karen. But right now, it's, it's early enough where they're probably at the ten, fifteen percent design level where if they had incorporate this, they had the design work. You know, they had the survey, excuse me, they had the survey, they haven't started permitting applications yet. So is, we still have some time. Um, I would say several weeks at least uh to decide if we want to incorporate segment two into the current design uh with one A. Yes, we still have, we still have time and they're, they're awaiting that direction based on your board's direction and the ministry, so.
And, and one B and three, the ones further up Lake Street, closer to the pool, are, in what respect, for example, is three, the one closest to the pool, related or unrelated to whatever might happen with our flood mitigation work associated with the pool or associated with?
Well, the, the reason why they have segment three a- a- as, as red is because there's really no wall that exists now. A lot of the tr- the, the tree, the vegetation there has pushed the bulldozer to the side. But really what you have is sloped dirt. You have almost, what, almost like tidal mudflats, right? They're just kind of areas of, of, of dirt that may not need a wall. So this is some of the discussions that Wooden Current I had. You may be able just to armor it with riprap and large stones. So, so really, you know, this, this segment three may not need a full wall because if you look, there's a lot of space between the edge of the road, which is about here, down to the um, down to the bend. So you, you may be able to get away with not replacing with the wall and just kind of battering the, the stone back. And again, they have it red because that's a ninety-degree bend and you can get a lot of washout and erosion. But again, the time it's gonna take this brook to erode the banks all the way up to the road, I mean, you, you, you're probably talking decades for that to happen. Um, however, we do want to mitigate the process down. So I think that segment three, and they mentioned it in the report too and the memo, may not be as expensive as the rest because you might be able to do alternate methods of, of improvements.
So we're still a ways away from the digging that would occur for the flood mitigation for the pool, correct?
Yes, yes.
That's what I figured.
Yes, and that, that is the lowest segment two. That segment three, total budget's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a hundred thousand dollars in contingency. So three fifty for design and construction for this segment, which makes sense because I don't believe they, they're proposing a wall there. So, you know, really, you could almost do two, one A and, 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 and three and, and be done with it. Or just do one A and two, right? Cause there is a cost restraint and then maybe do one B and three and just take care of the frontage along, along the road and be done. I mean, you could do any, you could do any, a- a- any mismatch of, of priorities and, 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 and segments and it wouldn't be wronged. Um, but, you know, you could look at it from a road standpoint, you could, you could look at it from a utility. Everybody's gonna look at it through a different lens, right? But I would say overall, you're definitely starting where you need to start first, right? That, that, that's one. You, you, the village is doing the right thing because you have the driveway entrance right here, you got a building here, you got road. Th- this is your critical area, you, you, we're starting in the right spot. I, I mean, you could say, yeah, it makes sense to go to segment two, sure. It's to the left of the dri- driveway entrance, right? It's a little bit more downstream. You want to make sure, again, it's really close to Lake Street and the sidewalk. Yeah, I'd say one A and two are fixed in stone, definitely need to do those. As far as the other ones, it all depends on you, mayor, and the administrator and the board, how far you want to kick them out. Are we in immediate life, death mode and, and public safety welfare mode? If we don't do three and, and one B and uh, and seven within the next three years? No, we're not. Um, but again, that's, I'm just here to give, to, to translate the recommendations of the consultant and ultimately that's a policy decision and a funding decision. I defer to you.
All right, well, you have done a good job of that. I thank you for that and thank Boardman Karen, sort of.
Yeah.
It's, it's always something, isn't it, huh?
They also, the old, old watering hole went out to, did they? And did it go to that point, the old watering hole that used to be there? Was that how the water source like went up until this building? Just out of curiosity, where the water originally was?
No, I think it was, it was somewhere where the pool is now.
So really, the pool was the central, it didn't actually flow into that.
I don't think so.
You know, the water is always flowing down through that brook, it's obviously been.
All right, all right, Anthony, we thank you for that. We're moving on to our regular meeting and we'll consider further.
Yes, we'll chat, mayor, board, thank you, have a very nice night. Eric, have a good night, Alyssa, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, so it's eight oh five, our, our PIA folks here? There are folks out there all, okay. Let's move then.
You won't miss anyone or just no message?
Picture calling. Thank you, Jonathan. Here's a serve.
I owe you.
They probably have more ways than you can say.
How are you?
Hello, guys.
Hello.
Lightning conversation.
Find a place to sit.
Two million, we're all.
Six million, if we did it all, I know. All right. All right, we have just finished our, our work session and we will begin the regular session.
Yep.
Welcome to the Village Board meeting uh for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, May twenty-nine, we're meeting on Wednesday instead of Monday because of the Memorial Day holiday. Uh, a couple of announcements uh to make and then we'll get to the first item on our agenda, which is to uh welcome this year's cohort of Pleasantville International Association uh travelers, young people from the high school uh who are launching after school ends into summer trips around the globe and representing their community and um, and bringing back information about the countries they visited. So before we start on that, I just had a couple of quick things to say. One is, well, we have some sort of an audience and hopefully an audience online. Um, this Friday, this coming Friday, uh, July one is the annual level fire department parade.
I think it's July.
Uh, did I say June?
And it's actually May thirty-first.
Well, I've got every aspect. This Friday, May thirty. Welcome to the Village of Larkspine. The firemen's parade is this Friday, I got, I got that much right. And it is May thirty-one. Uh, and uh, the fire department parade kicks off at seven PM uh starting as, as always uh near the library and making its way down Bedford Road through Memorial Plaza, back up uh Manville Road, uh left on Grove Street, left on Edgewood, back on uh Washington Avenue. So it's one of the great nights of the year for the Village of Pleasantville. Not only a fun night for everybody, but also a good night to uh applaud the fine folks of the level volunteer fire department and the many other volunteer fire departments who uh join us as well. So I encourage everybody to show up and um, do the same with your friends and it. A couple of, two other things to say, um, this past Monday, we had a memorial day service, uh, which I think uh worked out very nicely in part because the weather gods gave us a little gap between uh ugly weather before and after. So uh we had our annual memorial day service uh led by uh the Fetter Nickel American Legion Post number seventy-seven. And it was a great opportunity not only to honor those lost from many wars, uh but also to honor the members of the American Legion Post. And then a quick shout out to everybody who participated a week earlier in Pleasantville Day, which I think uh turned out to be a big success. Um, shout out to Ed Serbin uh and many members of the committee who made that thing happen and to our parks department as well. So with that, we're gonna fire up our annual uh launch of the Village of Pleasantville Department of State uh and talk a little bit about our PIA members.
Don't forget the bags.
So you guys are responsible for distributing the bags.
Sorry. Merch has been worth part of it.
So PIA, the Pleasantville International Association, have been going on for long, fifty years have I? Something on the order of fifty years, a really long time. Uh, and I can report that uh my daughter, who is now in her thirties, uh went to Costa Rica as part of PIA and I certainly uh remember uh with great clarity what an extraordinary experience that was for her, not only to go, uh but also to come back and to talk about what happened. And she remained in touch with her host family for quite a long time thereafter. And I also remember as a parent, but also on her behalf, the trepidation associated with marching out and jumping on a plane and going to a foreign country, in many cases a country uh that primarily speaks a language you don't have full control of. Um, and it's a, it's really a remarkable act and one uh that uh not only takes a sense of adventure, but a, a, a certain amount of courage that not everybody uh in high school is able to sum it up. So we are delighted to have you here and to uh offer our thanks for what you're about to do, uh to express our enthusiasm for hearing back from you when you come back. Uh, and um if any of you, you're, you're certainly not obligated to, but if you are willing to offer a, a word or two about how you chose the country you went to, uh, please do so. Again, no pressure, if you prefer not to, uh, don't hesitate. But it's our great pleasure to honor you and, and give you each a certificate. We have a little backpack thing uh to give you that said Pleasantville lot of, uh which you may or may not take to a foreign country. But if you do, kind of Stu Leonard's style, you could take a picture somewhere in front of some recognizable uh landmark in the country you visit. Uh, and we will certainly look forward to seeing you all back in the fall when you'll have a number of opportunities to talk about all that went on for you. So now first up on the list is Lucas de Barba Silva, editor Kyoto of Japan.
Oh.
Why Japan? Uh huh, okay. All right, here, step back there and loop around and just don't knock out the wires.
He has a great chat.
Eli Nielsen Papish. My love of Spain. Okay, how did you choose that?
I wanted to choose a trip that focused not just on language, but also on science, with also marine biology.
Oh, wow, that's cool. How's your Spanish?
It's getting.
It would be better when you.
Mazamandis. All right, step on back there, thank you.
Big job.
Thank you so much. This would be great.
Second in the Nielsen package crew, Zachary. Rabat, Morocco.
Um, yeah, I chose Morocco because I'm interested in learning Arabic and I also want to go somewhere with a culture very different from anywhere I've experienced.
Oh, yeah.
Which, which city in Morocco are you?
Uh, Rabat.
Oh, wow.
Get on back there.
Cool, you'll have to tell us about that.
Thank you.
You Nielsen, you're really, you're, you're knocking out a part there. Patrick O'Keefe, Dominican Republic. What led you to the Dominicans as a choice?
Um, I really wanted a few service and when I read the description, I just kind of really liked it and thought it would be a good opportunity.
It's cool, all right.
Same.
Daphrin Tatiere. Toulouse, France, I, I shame myself, you say. Toulouse?
Ah, Toulouse.
Yeah. Why France?
Um, I'm seeing graduate high school.
Okay, pretty good. Well, quite impressive. I took France for five years and remember almost none of it, which I regret. Had I gone to France as you are, I, I, it probably would have stuck. So congratulations, and to your death. Hi, Martin Wallace. Sure, going to Ghana. I won't ask you why Kai chose Ghana.
I should know.
Do you, okay.
So, I was mom's from South Africa and I thought I'd be interested, interesting going to Africa.
Cool.
About cars, I know, that's cool.
Yeah. All right, thank you for standing him instead. Daniel Zibert, Kyoto.
Why Kyoto? Um, I, I, I find the Japanese language very interesting and I also find that their way of life, their customs are interesting. I hope to emulate when I get back here.
Do you have any Japanese?
Um, I, I learned like a tiny bit on Duolingo.
All right. So that's seven travelers, which I think is a larger number than we've had in recent years. Uh, uh, quite an impressive thing. I can tell you, as I think you probably all know, I can certainly speak in my family. My daughter never would have thought of doing this had it not been for the fact that she saw those before her do it. And uh that likelihood is also the case in high school now. Folks that see you do this will think, hey, you have to do that too. And who knows, next year it could be filled a room, fifty people now. So such an impressive undertaking, really a courageous undertaking and a bunch of young people. such an impressive undertaking, really a courageous undertaking and a bunch of young people representing Pleasantville in extraordinary ways and reaching out across the globe in ways that clearly this world needs. So thank you so much for doing it. But all seven of you come up and you can get a picture.
Yes.
Come on, board members. Maybe in front of the tables. Got it?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks to all the members. Keeping this great tradition alive, sir. You're welcome to stay for our dry as dust revolution, but you don't.
I'll be translating in Japanese. That was my first other country. It's Japan.
Oh, yeah.
I remember coming back to Pleasantville Pizza Hut and being like, oh my gosh.
And just a quick reminder, we're having our house and garden tour, historic house and garden tour.
Oh, come up a little closer so this gets recorded. Yeah, that's all right.
Um, just a reminder that we're having our historic house and garden tour on June ninth from three thirty to five P M followed by a garden party. And we have information on Facebook. We've been posting on social media. So if anyone's interested in attending, you can buy your tickets by just clicking the link online or we have some flyers that we're going to leave maybe in the offices downstairs.
Sure.
Will there be day of tickets? Do you know?
And hopefully there'll be day of tickets.
Do you know where it's starting again?
Yemi has variables in her life right now.
But no, I'm actually, there are people I want to tell that to where it begins because I know they were asking.
Yes. So once you buy your ticket online, you're going to get an email with directions about how to pick up a brochure, which has information about all the houses and where you can go. Yeah. Once you buy your ticket online, you will get a email.
So that's the renewal of an old tradition as well.
Yes, it's been quite a lot. It's been more than ten years.
Yeah.
Do you have one that I could take?
Yeah, I'll take one this summer. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, guys. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
That's all right. Happy travels.
Thank you, thank you. So exciting.
It is. So, all right, back to a couple of announcements to, to make. One on a, on a grim note, our Manville Road project is temporarily on hiatus. The contractor finished the, the new island in the middle of Manville near the Burns Media Arts Lab on Friday, but has departed. We are currently in a holding pattern, waiting for final approvals from both the M T A and an issue with the Department of Transportation in the corner. So meetings are going on about that aggressively and we hope to see that up and running. There are really only what, two to three weeks of work left to complete the whole thing and repave all of Manville from Grand Street all the way to Tompkins, but we're currently in a holding pattern. So we sent out an email today indicating the slip lane is not closing this week as we said it would. Stay tuned. The other report I wanted to make is that the pool is now open and it's up and running. We've had a pretty good response. A lot of people have signed up. If you haven't yet signed up for a pool tag, you can do so at the rec department. And we also have an option this year for a digital pool tag. So the twenty first century has arrived at the Pleasantville Pool. We look forward to a good season. As many of you who care about the pool are aware, we're expecting the bids back on the pool and flood mitigation project within the next couple of weeks. And then we'll have to make some hard decisions depending on what those numbers come back looking like. So we'll let you know what that looks like as we, as that progresses. Music Festival Saturday, July thirteen. Music Festival tickets are on sale at PleasantvilleMusicFestival dot com. The lineup is out. We're marketing heavily. Looks like a really good season. Do we still have tent city sites?
Sure do.
So we have some tent city sites remaining. A great opportunity to buy a tent city site and have a base of operations. You bring your own ten by ten tent and have your little home away from home. So get the to PleasantvilleMusicFestival dot com if you're interested in a tent city site. Alyssa here on the third floor of Village Hall can help you with that and would be pleased to do so. Anybody who's interested in being a sponsor, we have sponsorship kits available and are happy to hear from anyone who might either work for a company or be aware of a company that might be interested in being a sponsor at any level of music festival, please let us know. Then reminding folks that our seasonal ban on fuel powered leaf blowers is operational now. It's May fifteenth to September thirtieth. So gas powered leaf blowers are not permitted in the village during this season until October. We certainly have seen a lot of people responding appropriately using electric blowers. We've had some conversations with some lawn services that have continued to use gas blowers. Please, if you are a homeowner who uses a lawn service, let your lawn service know about this rule because in the end, if a citation is issued, it will go to the homeowner. And so it's in everybody's interest to make sure that that rule is followed and peace can reign in Pleasantville neighborhoods that have been affected by this. And then the block party, the annual block party Saturday, September twenty one.
Correct.
Paul Alvarez, captain block party.
Yeah, September twenty one. And with a rain date of September twenty eight, by next week, we plan on putting out a flyer that's going to have a save the date. And we're also going to be coming out with with the different levels of sponsorship available to any businesses that want to participate. And then also getting out some information for any volunteers because we're going to have a block party committee, just like the way that there's a Pleasantville Day Committee. We're going to do the same kind of thing, creating more people involved. Okay?
Anybody else have announcements to make?
I also wanted to let everyone know that this Saturday, June first, the board will be, some of the board members will be at Pleasantville Farmers Market at the community table.
Oh, thank you for reminding.
So we'll be there from eight thirty, I think, till twelve thirty.
So come and ask any questions. We'll have some material showing some of the projects we have going on, but also happy to get feedback from community members on any and all subjects. So farm market Saturday. Is there any comment from any member of the public or anybody online? If you're online and have a comment, raise your hand in the purchase pane. I see none. On to the resolutions, Paul, number one eighty two.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves amendments in the regular meeting held on May thirteenth, two thousand twenty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections to the bits? All in favor?
Aye. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending in two thousand twenty four as listed below. Budget transfer of the general fund, two thousand four hundred and twenty seven dollars from finance bank fees to assessor supplies, two thousand five hundred from judgments and claims to Village Hall outside services, eighty three thousand from judgments and claims to police anytime, five hundred from senior printing to senior nutritional repairs, three thousand from rec use outside service to camp credit card fees, three thousand from Panther Club part time to parks overtime, ten thousand from Panther Club part time to rec center repairs, one thousand one hundred and seventy nine dollars from employee benefits, health insurance to employee benefits dental vision, ten thousand from employee benefits, health insurance to Capitol Police Communication Project, four thousand from employee benefits, health insurance to Memorial Plaza Civic Space Phase One, Capitol Project, three thousand employee benefits, health insurance transferred to Capitol Pool Reconstruction project for fiscal year ending twenty twenty one. Budget transfer of the water fund, five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars from water contingency to water distribution, one thousand five hundred from water admin supplies to water distribution, six hundred and eighty seven from, basically all of these go to water distribution. So there's six hundred and eighty seven dollars from water supply repairs, a hundred and fifty from water purification contracts, two thousand five hundred from water admin engineering and three hundred and ten dollars from water purification supplies. So for a total of ten thousand four hundred and sixty seven dollars going to water distribution supplies and overtime and patching. Increase of revenue and expense of the capital fund, ten thousand interfund transfer for police communication project, four thousand interfund transfer for Memorial Plaza Plaza Civic Space Phase One and three thousand interfund transfer for pool reconstruction fiscal year ending twenty twenty one.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we're in the last week of our fiscal year and this is the squaring up of accounts, underfunded to overfunded.
That's right.
Comments, questions? All in favor? I most approve one eighty four you.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated May twenty nine, two thousand twenty four, purpose F Y E, two thousand twenty four and check numbers one one zero nine three two, one one zero nine three four dash one 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 zero zero four, one 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 zero one zero dash one 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 zero one one. Come on, one, also one 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 zero one three dash one 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 zero six nine and one 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 zero seven nine dash one 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 zero eight four.
Siri has just called Dubai.
That is exactly what that felt like. The general fund is a hundred and thirty three thousand one hundred and ninety two dollars and four cents, special purpose, five hundred and twenty one dollars and fifty cents, water fund, two hundred and fifty six thousand three hundred, three hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty two eighty nine. Okay, guys, capital fund, twenty three thousand five hundred and seven dollars and forty cents, refuse fund, eight thousand nine hundred and forty six and sixty five cents totaling four hundred and twenty two thousand five hundred dollars and forty eight cents.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Just one thing, that check numbers are so sporadic like that because finance was having trouble with their check printing. And someone was malfunctioning and it was driving them mad.
I know. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor? I motion approve one eighty five.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated May twenty nine, two thousand twenty four for fiscal year two thousand twenty five. Current check numbers, one one zero nine three three, one one zero seventy through one 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 zero seventy eight for general fund, thirty five thousand five hundred and six and sixty three cents, water fund, two thousand fifty six and eighty three cents, refuse fund, one thousand three hundred and ninety one and eighty seven cents for a total of thirty eight thousand nine hundred and fifty five and thirty three cents.
Is there a second? Again, these are expenses that accrue to the next fiscal year that begins on Saturday. All in favor? I most approve one eighty six.
Whereas the village board of the village of Pleasantville, the village has been notified that third floor variable refrigeration volume, B R V system in Village Hall requires replacement of three B R V heads, which are currently leaking refrigerant. And whereas the village's facilities management consultant, William Link, has confirmed that if the three B R V heads are not replaced immediately, the constant refrigerant leak will cause the entire system to lose efficiency and affect the temperatures in the entire space. Should this continue, definitely it could lead to damage to the compressor that supplies pulling to the entire third floor. And whereas it is necessary to expedite the replacement of the replacement the replacement of three B R V heads on the third floor of Village Hall to prevent further damage to the compressor unit and to ensure proper function of the H vac system on the third floor of Village Hall. And whereas the village has obtained a proposal from Omni Partners to replace the three indoor B R V heads in an amount of thirty four thousand one hundred and twenty six dollars and ninety one cents, a copy of the proposal from Omni Partners is submitted herewith. Now, therefore be it resolved that in accordance with the provisions of general municipal law, paragraph one of three four, the village board of the village of Pleasantville hereby finds and determines that a public emergency exists with respect to the replacement of the three indoor B R V heads, which if not replaced immediately, will continue to leak and will cause the entire system to lose efficiency, affect the temperatures in the entire space and result in severe damage to the compressor unit. Be it further resolved, the village board of the village of Pleasantville hereby determines that the cost to design and implement the repair and or replacement of indoor heads are necessary to preserve preserve the village's property and assure the health and safety of the residents of the village of Pleasantville. Be it further resolved that the village board hereby authorizes the expenditure of funds not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance to replace the three indoor B R V heads. And be it further resolved that the mayor of the village of Pleasantville and the village administrator of the village of Pleasantville are hereby authorized to enter into a contract with they can apply for the replacement of the three indoor B R V heads at a collective cost not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
So just, I think it's B R V heads in the second to last paragraph and then there's an extra and in the last paragraph, just.
So that's a storm of words that basically justifies the immediate purchase without a normal bidding prices.
Yeah, correct. We, the server room is on the third floor, so if we lose cooling there, that's, that's problematic for, for operation. These heads, we went through a similar project last year on the first floor. They were all installed at the same time and seemed to be aging out at the same time as well. So we do believe that pricing is competitive going through Omni Partners. You bid out the, the cost of the equipment and, and labor. So it's a mini bid system. So we do believe that's competitive price.
All right, comments, questions? All in favor? I motion approve one eighty seven back to you. Oh, you got shorted. You got taken.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the updated village master fee schedule attached to it.
Is there a second? That master fee schedule is attached and it is the schedule of all of the fees we charge for various kinds of activities.
That's correct. We do that at the end of every fiscal year.
Comments, questions? All in favor? I motion approve one eighty eight.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes donation of four two thousand twenty four Pleasantville Music Festival tickets to Byron Health Education Foundation.
Is there a second? We've been routinely offering these donations, not only to support our neighbors, but also to encourage others to come. All in favor? I motion approve one eighty nine.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the donation of two two thousand twenty four Pleasantville Music Festival tickets to the Pleasantville.
Is there a second? All in favor? I approve one ninety eight.
Oh, this is so perfect. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves a request for Colin Higgins, one oh seven Stars Lane, hold a block party nearby Close Stars Lane to Congress Street and Crawford on Saturday, June first, two thousand twenty four from two ten P M, rain date of June eighth, two thousand twenty four.
Is there a second? Will you be attending said block party?
If, yes, all, all Roseland T S.
T V D.
That is my favorite, favorite day.
All right. Second, look forward to carrying an exciting day. That's a tight neighborhood with a lot of good neighborhood spirit. Much appreciate all the neighborhoods that decide to do block parties. All in favor? I motion approve one ninety one. All.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints John Brooks, a physician of part time bus driver salary of twenty dollars per hour effective June first, two thousand twenty four.
Is there a second?
Question marks?
Yes.
What? Where is the bus driver?
The senior bus.
The senior bus.
All in favor? I. Thank you, John. Welcome to the team. One ninety two.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign an agreement with Millennium Strategies in the amount of thirty nine thousand six hundred dollars for the purposes of grant writing services.
Is there a second? So that's our second year with Millennium. We saw those at the New York Conference of Mayor. Mayor's annual meeting.
Same, same fee as last year. They hold the level funding for their first two years and then likely will propose an increase next year. And that amount is, we split that about proportionally over the general fund, water fund and refuse fund.
And we had some modest success.
We have, certainly. And they're, they're effective.
Yes. All in favor? I motion approve one ninety three, Amy.
Remind me for a solve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the donation of two A E D devices from Pleasantville Dance Club and Pleasantville ASO.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this state has established new and marks stringent rules around making sure that the A E D devices are available at every sporting activity and that there are people who are qualified to use them. So that's great. Dance Club and ASO are participating in this. We thank them very much. Uh Dance Club and uh A SO are participating in this, we thank them very much. Uh you are gonna see uh new installations of. Of A E Ds in several places around the village. And uh. This strategy there, if I recall correctly, is that they're marked with, they're locked boxes marked with a code. And then you can call emergency number to get the code.
That's right.
All in favor? I motion approve, more on that when those are installed, one ninety four, Paul.
Whereas Michael Trigliat licensee owner of property located at twelve Parkway Terrace, Pleasantville, New York, one oh five seven oh. Destinated on tax assessment map of the town of Pleasant as parcel ID. One oh six point nine dash one dash fifty three, the property. As requested, the village board of trustees grant a license permit licensee to use a portion of the Parkway Terrace right away to construct, use. And maintain stairs and a retaining wall and. Whereas licensee seeks to install and maintain stairs and the retaining wall to replace a similar set of stairs. And a retaining wall in a substance in a substantially the same location within the Parkway Terrace right of way and. Whereas licensee has prepared submitted architectural drawings entitled twelve Parkway Terrace Residence Site Work. Prepared by Transitions Design and Architecture, P L C, Pleasantville, New York, one oh five seven zero. Last revised on April eleventh, two thousand twenty four, sheets A dash zero zero one through A dash zero zero five. And whereas the drawings received the pool from the village of Pleasantville Planning Commission by resolution dated April twenty fourth. Two thousand twenty four, subject to several conditions, including a requirement to secure a license agreement from the village. For the portion of the improvements that encroach into the right of way and. Whereas the licensee desires to enter into a license agreement with the village to allow for retaining wall. And stairs to be located within a portion of the right of way and whereas the area of the Parkway Terrace right of way. Upon which is retained, upon which the retaining wall and stairs would encroach is not currently needed for village purposes now. There being result. But the board of trustees and the village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the mayor and or the village administrator to take all actions necessary. To execute a license agreement with Michael Trigliat upon the terms and conditions consistent with the attached license agreement. For the construction of the stairs and the retaining wall partially located in the Parkway Terrace right of way as shown on the plans referenced herein. And subject to review and approval by the village attorney as to form and substance.
Is there a second? As described in the resolution, we took a look at this, the planning commission has reviewed it and approved it. Uh all in favor? I motion approve one ninety five.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby approves the request from Max Corrigan. Forty two Iroquois Road to hold a block party and thereby close Iroquois Road between thirty Iroquois Road and forty eight Iroquois Road. On Sunday, June second, twenty twenty four, from three P M to six P M.
Is there a second? Have a good time, Iroquois residents, all in favor? I motion approve one ninety six.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby accepts the donation from Pleasantville. High Wathah Lodge in the amount of two thousand dollars, the purpose of Pleasantville Recreation Camp Scholarships Program.
Is there a second? So the High Wathah Lodge, the Masonic Lodge here at Pleasantville, uh those folks uh. Uh in concert, as you will see, with some others uh have stepped up actively to uh help support scholarships for. Uh families who qualify for free reduced lunch uh at school. To uh have scholarship to send their child or children to the Pleasantville camp, and so it's been certainly a a happy report. Uh that so many folks have stepped up and we very much appreciate uh every member of the Pleasantville. High Wathah Lodge for this contribution. All in favor? I motion approve one ninety seven.
Resolve the board of trustees hereby subsidization from Martin and Joanne Homlich Charitable Fund. A donor advice fund of the Renaissance Charitable Foundation in the amount of two thousand five hundred. For the purpose of the Pleasantville Recreation Camp Scholarships Program.
Is there a second? Just as I said earlier, uh. Folks ask and and Pleasantvillians uh respond. Uh Marty and Joanne uh have been generous supporters of the village of Pleasantville for a long time. Uh as well as as great and engaged civic members of our community, we thank them much, all in favor? I motion approve one ninety eight.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a sponsorship agreement with R M A of New York. For the two thousand twenty four Pleasantville Music Festival.
Is there a second? R M A sponsored last year as well, delighted to have them back, appreciate it again. July thirteenth Pleasantville Music Festival, get to Pleasantville Music Festival dot com and buy your tickets now, all in favor? I most approve. One ninety nine, the last of our items.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby authorizes to the village administrator. Good vibes for bid twenty twenty four dash seven for traffic signal system improvements upgrade.
Is there a second?
Um so the traffic signal upgrades for Bedford Road, um we got uh some proposals in. And they're uh, let's say around ninety thousand dollars, so we do have to go out to bed bid for those. We can't just accept two or three proposals and go in there, so. It's at a threshold in which we need to publicly bid, so it'll be a quick bid, probably about ten days. Um and hopefully we can move on that immediately thereafter.
So this is the the next phase of this several phase project to try to uh improve the function and the throughput of traffic. At all of the traffic lights along Bedford Road. Here at Bedford and Wheeler, at Bedford and Memorial Plaza slash Marble, down by uh. The uh. Corner by Key Food and out at Pleasantville, so um long and elaborate study uh. Uh that we've had several public presentations about, now to the phase of. What can be done to improve the tech of what we have out there, and these cameras uh are part of that.
So we do have multi-modal funding that will help offset that cost, I think we have about thirty five thousand dollars uh for a grant fund.
So that helps, so help is on the way, everyone is, I I I know uh all of us included frustrated by some of the timing of the lights and the extraordinary short. Uh timing of the light uh at Wheeler that doesn't look far as out. Um we've been working hard for some months, it it's not just a matter of flipping a switch, you have to have a study that supports the changes and now some uh. Uh physical infrastructure improvements, but we're on it, headed out to bid. And so you think within fractal accept fee bids at the next meeting, is that realistic or?
Um if if not that meeting, the meeting after.
All right, all in favor? I motion approve, that was the last of our resolutions. Uh any new business from any member of the board?
Um I just wanted to confirm when our next meeting was going to be, June, June tenth, okay.
Nor will I.
Okay.
Oh.
So what happens in that scenario?
As long as you have three, alright. Have we heard anything about that?
No.
Alright. Alright, if it looks like, well, let's find out what whether are are YouTube solid for sure on that date?
Uh I can make that date, yeah.
Well, again, June tenth, is it right?
Monday, June tenth.
Yeah, I have no issues.
Alright, so we'll check with David to be sure we have a forum, otherwise we'll have to consider.
If anything else changes.
A switcheroo about that. That uh. Uh is um. Incidentally, the uh the birthday of the Fantronic Conlegion Post, I think it's their hundred fifth. Year, I can't even say it, so. Um okay, uh then uh is there a motion to adjourn from our regular session? Return to work session to pick up the last item we didn't get to, which was discussing. Uh the five minute parking spaces on Wheeler and then to go into executive session. Uh to discuss real property and contractual matters. So, second. All in favor? I motion approved. Uh thank you all, congratulations again to our P I A ambassador from Pleasantville High School. Uh and uh again, sign up for the pool if you haven't, sign up for the music festival if you haven't. And we will see you on or about Monday, June tenth, if we have a form of question about that, we might have to switch that date. Uh but uh as of the moment, our next meeting is on Monday, June tenth. Thank you all. Okay, so. There's been some conversations going on, uh. Inquired to the chief and uh staff about what to do about the five minute parking. On the parallel parking side of Wheeler, which currently says and has said for many years, five minute parking all hours, all days. Um it is certainly not working that way. Uh and uh indeed, there is no enforcement of it at night. And arguably, no reason to enforce it at night, right? It's providing additional supply problem for folks, folks going to restaurants and the like. So. You'll correct me if I have it wrong, but the the advice that sort of came out of this conversation was to make it fifteen minute parking.
The advice with uh this was the police, yes, okay.
Fifteen minute parking uh in what timeframe?
The same for the meters, so Monday through Saturday, uh with the eight A M to six P.
So, I mean, i- in the end, we're in a circumstance where at this point, it would be. I think unfair to have a rate of terror enforcement of five minutes because we haven't been enforcing it and there still remains some sort of post-COVID. Tendencies for people to do what they will do, but the original idea had, there was a point in time many years ago when there was no parking allowed at all on that side.
Was it a two-way street?
It was a two-way street, but even after it went one way, there was no parking allowed at all. Uh the five minute parking was intended to create, you know, the sense that you could get downtown, grab whatever you needed, cup of coffee, whatever. Obviously, the retail mix has changed.
My my concern is. I'm familiar with this parking now because I've developed a habit of stopping for my morning espresso. Usually.
But only for five minutes?
Yeah, well, I mean, I. No, I sometimes, I have quarters in the car, so I sometimes park, I often park in the angled parking, but I'm more aware of the parking there. So I guess my concern is if we move it to fifteen minutes, I feel like people are gonna interpret that as meaning thirty minutes, right? Like so. Like, what is the sense that if we increase it from five to fifteen, that that's really going to lead to more compliance?
I'm not sure if it leads to more compliance, I mean, I have a ringside seat on this from my day job office and I can tell you there have been a number of people. Uh especially in days when they realize we don't have an enforcement officer who who literally parked there for ten hours. They're in the five minute parking for ten hours.
Okay.
Uh and I.
And we don't ticket people when they do that?
Well, there isn't anybody to do it if we don't have an enforcement officer.
Like, but that's usually mostly.
Yeah, some people who work there.
Uh they David is raising his hand.
Oh, hi David, I didn't know you were there, we can ask them, we can ask them about the next meeting.
Unmute if you want.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Sorry, I'm driving through a rainstorm in New Jersey somewhere.
Be careful.
First of all, I'm gonna be in Kansas for the next meeting, I could potentially do it remotely, but I cannot, definitely can't be there in. Person for the cap.
Alright, so it may be that we should reconsider that date.
Yeah, what about the thirteen?
I know, let me look at that. Let's figure that out.
Okay, well, well.
Alright, so you you can't be there in person on the tenth, either, okay. Got it. Do you have an opinion about the five minute parking on Wheeler?
Yeah, my, I guess my question is, um is there? Do we have adequate parking for loading and unloading? Is there any rationale for having a couple of spaces that are marked out for that? Or for, and and the second question is, do we have adequate handicap parking on that street as well?
So we have uh two handicap spaces uh marked on Wheeler. And um. Obviously, there are moments when that isn't enough, I would say again anecdotally, and I'm there a lot. Uh that seems to have been mostly okay. Um that that is to say, there is, you know, frequently one or the other of them open. Um the uh loading and unloading is an all-day long venture and uh that is FedEx. U P S, Amazon, uh and trucks making deliveries to restaurants and stores. Um. It uh has been working out, I would say, s- sort of okay. That is to say, there are times when it's very difficult for those folks, but I also think um the reality is if you're delivering a. Whole load of food to a restaurant, uh you you need to park somewhere near the restaurant as opposed to at some specific loading and unloading zone. So my take on it is, my my personal take on it is that at the moment, the sign. Reflects a rule that. We don't intend to enforce them, that nobody believes. Um I would like to get to a circumstance where we could episodically at least enforce a rule that says, no. Guys, when we said fifteen minutes, we didn't mean you could park there for four hours, but literally there are quite a few people parking there for hours on it. Um. The idea was to create this, you know, some transient parking, uh but to make it free, others have suggested at one point we could put. We could stripe out specific bases and put meters there, but that uh. Creates a much more structured set of parking. Um and less likelihood that you can just sort of slide into a space and run and get a cup of coffee, so. At least preliminarily, it seems to me that fifteen minutes. Is a reasonable thing, uh and uh and and to to say that it's enforced only during the day. And on Saturdays and not at night and on Sundays also seems reasonable to me. There isn't a clear public purpose to enforce it at night or on Sundays.
Uh so you think, um so my biggest question is about enforcement, so you you think that making this change. Would make it more likely that it would be enforced?
Um well, first off, at the moment, uh. It 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 seems quite unreasonable to enforce it when we have so lightly enforced it for so long. Part of that is a person power thing, but part of it is, you know, the evolution out of. The pandemic time when we were lightly enforcing in general, because the only reason to write a ticket is if you're, you know, harming some public purpose. And for the most part, that wasn't happening, where now in an environment, as you likely see, where at lunch and at dinner time and on weekends. People are routinely parking for a long time and people are routinely double parking and getting out of the car and leaving it. To go get what whatever they want.
There's a lot of double.
Right, um I mean, it's trying to do a bit of a free for all, it's not that.
Is there a way till we see what the traffic will be like after the camera and stuff?
Well, so obviously that's gonna help to get cars through, but it just seems funny to me that we would have signs up that. Nobody believes, including us. Make them.
I wasn't aware that that was an issue, um. Yeah, I mean, I think like short-term parking is important, and if we have an abuse of the short-term parking. Particularly in a place that has such high congestion, you know, that that we need to do something to remedy. And so, um I like the idea of of it not being metered, um I don't know if that's. Feasible long term, but I I I do, I think it's nice to have some short-term un-metered parking. And if and if this is a way to do it where we can have some enforcement so that there's just a sense of like. Look, let's not abuse the privilege here, like we need to keep the short term so that people can, you know.
I mean, that's where I was coming from.
Yeah.
Um, you know, should it be ten minutes, should it be thirty minutes? We need to get, I think, to someplace where it feels reasonable to enforce it, even if it's not enforced on an absolutely everyday basis. You know, at the moment. Um. Yeah, I I've heard, I I a number of people complained to me about specific cars. Uh because they see me, you know, on Wheeler and they say, you know, that car has been after six hours.
Yeah.
Uh again, I'm not trying to go after anybody and and we're not trying.
Could we also, I mean, another thing we could do is just have the police issue some warrants, right? If part of the problem is. That we've allowed this culture. To sort of take hold where people are able to park there for several hours and not expect a ticket. You know, maybe we'd need to like signal to these cars, we're gonna start enforcing this, you know.
I I don't, I feel that that's kind of a mixed message to put a larger sign in this area, like more time, just as like a. No metered parking, if if you're gonna do it, I think you should just do metered parking.
Well, so. If we do metered parking, I mean, that would either mean buying a whole bunch of meters in court really to put them in.
Right.
And then having specific spaces, um so that would be.
Definitely move the traffic more.
That would be a not inconsequential expense.
Right.
And, you know, but also. As Nicole said, there is is um. Something nice about the idea that you can run downtown and you can get a, even drink a cup of coffee with free.
You could do that, there's there's reason to go in, like within reason, you can pop in a lot, you know. The coffee shop and and not necessarily have to pay two dollars to do it, you know, you you are also within reason if you know there's no line and you're running in. I don't, I think that's sort of mixed message to put in a lot more signs.
I mean, it's not more signs, we already. I mean, it's not more signs. We already, it would, we replace the signs.
Okay, you just replace, but that's.
We currently have a whole bunch of signs that say five-minute parking, all hours, all days. They've been there for twenty years. Um, we clearly don't mean that. We certainly don't mean that at night. Uh, but um, yet someone who's never been here pulls up at night and thinks I'm not allowed to park here, even though everybody else is doing it.
I think it should coincide with the movement of traffic. And then if you're gonna upgrade Wheeler and if you're going to say, this is a very busy street. And we have a lot of people here, that should be a part of it, or that would be.
So, let, let me also say, the other problem with metering it is, as David mentioned, that the delivery function, like. Frequently, a box truck arrives and it, it needs, you know, quite a bit more space than a car. And, you know, generally, it, it's kind of working out alright. But if you have specific metered spaces, then they haven't got a place for them. So we, we could in the end get to metering, my sense of it, and, and I think I see it more than anybody because my day job office is right there. It, it feels to me that we need to get to a point where we actually could reasonably enforce. And so the signs ought to be something that, at least at the times when you enforce it, is reasonable. And, and five minutes isn't, but it's too short.
My concern is, but how do we, like, they can't mark Wheeler.
So they, I mean, the enforcement officers uh, scan the barcode on your registration. And then when they come back, they scan it again. And that tells them, you know, one of the problems is if the car has moved. In an effort to say, oh, it was here, I moved twenty feet, whatever, someone's gotta game the system. There's perhaps not that much we can do about it, but.
They're scanning.
They scan the, they scan the registration.
I mean, I just think we should make it enforce that. And if we're not.
But is it fair to enforce five minutes?
Well, I mean, if we, if we did it tomorrow, no, it's not fair, but if we decided to make an announcement and. And, you know, really give like, hey, we are going to start enforcing this and put that out there to everyone. But then I, so like, that's what I goes back to the, my, my concern is more. If we're gonna do this, we really need to try to enforce it so that it can deter people from actually doing this. Now, it doesn't mean that we have someone doing this every single day, but we at least allow maybe. One or two days in the week where this happens at random times. And people get ticketed and this way it becomes a, a, a deterring factor, but we actually do.
I, I agree with that. I just don't think it's fair to do that on five minutes.
That's fine.
So I mean, we ought to change that number to something.
I, I, I'm fine with fifteen. I think fifteen sounds good and I think that the um. Specifying that it's during the daytime hours makes sense because we.
It's a six, Monday to Saturday.
Which aligns with our me, you know, meters.
Yeah, to have a consistent.
I mean, again, the only change required here is we replace the signs that are already there with a different.
Am I still alive, guys? Yeah, cuz I, I would support fifteen too, simply because, um, it, the purpose is to. Allow somebody to go inside a service and do something quickly. The five minutes only works if, if there is absolutely no line for that.
Right.
Right, yeah, it's, it's not legitimately possible.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. I think, I think fifteen minutes is an appropriate amount.
Same, and then, you know, you see how that goes. Obviously, the traffic flow out at the traffic light, it improves the circumstance. Although it probably doesn't much change. I mean, honestly, I think the biggest problem we're having is on weekdays during the workday. When people have figured they can just park there, partly because, you know, we've been, at various points in the past year, been short a parking enforcement officer. And so enforcement has been reduced. Um, but it also feels like. We, we, we ought to have a sign that we actually think makes sense.
But I agree with Paul, but it has to be coupled with enforcement, otherwise there's not much point.
Yeah, we are, what's the point of us?
Alright, so let's have a conversation with the chief about how realistic uh, it is to establish that enforcement of the near term as we seek to. Uh, fill that remaining empty old place.
Yes, um, I'm just very fine with eight A M, yeah, okay, um. That sounds good. Uh, and then this would be a local law process, as we've done in the past, so a public hearing, you know, proposal of law, scheduled public hearing. Did you wanna talk about Castleton Street, the dead end area?
Yes, um, so there's been an ongoing conversation on Castleton Street with quite a bit of. Uh, parking issues and some uh, some conflict between the various commercial. Tenants and residents uh, down on Castleton Street. In part because there's been a lot of activity, there is a lot of activity in grit ninja. On the next block over.
Oh, yeah.
And uh, I mean, candidly, way too many cars for relatively.
Well, they also have, there's a party space.
There's a party space there too, uh.
I mean, that gets very crowded.
It, it does, but that tends to be at night. And so it's been less of a problem. I shouldn't say that it has been no problem, but it's been somewhat less of a problem. Problem that's been happening during the day is that you end up with a lot of people parking at Castleton Street. Uh, some of them employees who, who don't have no place to park, in part because their employers are trying to keep their spaces open for their. So anyway, uh, there've been a bunch of issues uh, attached to this and clearly we need to change the parking requirements. Uh, and establish some no parking zones, especially at the exit from the, the Hankles lot. Where when cars park uh, in some places on Castle and Street, the tractor trailers can't get out. Without making a series of.
Well, the dance school is there too.
Right, so the dance school, the dance school has been trying to actively manage. How uh, how their flow of parents come and go. And at least there's more space down there. But we clearly, we need to identify some short-term parking, some, some no parking zones opposite the Hankles. So the goal was to establish the, the neighbors, the consensus of the neighbors was what?
Two or three hours. Near the dog park. So you would um, prohibit basically uh, employees parking there all day long. And open up that space to folks that are visiting.
So again, you know, one person's solution is another person's problem. But there isn't any question that what's going on at Castleton is causing problems. That, uh, it's certainly the tractor-trailer exit issue has to be resolved where the no parking is across the way.
Yeah, and we can move signs and, and white paint down. In the immediate future.
But I, I will say that the uh, the, perhaps a three-hour parking requirement, say from Hankles to the dead end.
Yeah.
But not north. Not north, probably. Not between, above Hankles on the way to Mark.
Yeah, to Marble.
So there's also, and, and this isn't a village issue. Uh, some struggle attached to people parking in private parking lots that are, a bunch of parking lots there that sort of feel like. You could park there, but they are private parking lots, and they are reserved for the tenants.
And, and part of this is a great amount of overflow problem because they don't have their.
Honestly, that is advancedable. That's like a very.
True, yeah.
Is this more like a weekend problem?
No, it's a weekday, right?
Weekday too. So grit ninja is active during like.
Oh, yeah.
School hours?
Right after school.
Right after.
They have like four, four fifteen classes every single day. And then so the drop-off and pickup is horrendous. I mean, what are you gonna do with small spaces? You know, you're trying to find a way to, how do you manage that?
I mean, honestly, there, there isn't a great solution to that, uh, at the moment. I, I will say it seems rather clear that. I, I'm obviously glad they're successful. Their, their success is incompatible with their, with the circulation, the behavior.
Yeah, what are the rules around parking in, in this relevant?
So, this willing is an entirely private parking lot. Um, uh, people, uh, people, you mean the, the one that's up off Castleton? Entirely private and, um, I have no reason to think they're looking to offer a parking.
Usually like, meaning, I don't, have you seen it at capacity ever there?
No, I haven't. But again, um.
They wouldn't be interested.
I mean, that would be, I, I can't speak to that. I doubt it. The problem is, as soon as you make that offer, especially in a situation like this. It, it, it turns into an unmanageable problem in part because you don't really know who it is who's parking. Um, that turns into a different set of issues. So, I mean, we can have a conversation with them, um.
I only say that because that's the overflow for all the dance and like, for myself as well as.
And you go into Hankles?
Oh, yeah, but that's the, the, their, their furthest out parking, I would say that is used by all of the dance people. Because there's really only six spots close enough and then there's another four maybe along the way. And two like very minimal in our five-minute parking. They, they have one of those in front of the breaking ground dance. But then when you go to grit ninja, a lot of people try to like, get, get there as well, that it's overflowed. And that's like the overflow parking for both of those places.
So I don't know whether they've had conversation with Hankles. That, that would be entirely up to them.
Yeah, no, I don't think they have. I just was.
Right, if it's, it might turn into a victimless crime until unless, it's certainly there. It's clear that, as is always the case, there are some commercial tenants. Especially the ones with the common landlord or what's working together. There are other commercial tenants who are at odds with some of their neighbors. Just different needs, different issues. But they've asked for some relief and it does, I mean, without question, the, the Hankles trucks issue has to be resolved. So Eric, why don't we get the chief's opinion about where the no parking zone should be? And then, uh, if we proposed a three-hour parking, a time limit from Hankles down to the dead end. That would at least go part of the way towards addressing the concerns. That were brought to us by the. The folks down. Alright, uh, that was the last of our work session items, right? Motion to go into executive session on, uh. Matters of real estate attack. So, second. All in favor? Alright, uh, David, we're gonna end the Zoom. If you wanna call in, you could. What's your take on that?
Yeah, um, I, I can call him on myself and.